rides down to Pennsylvania, WISE, or I guess you can bus all the way down to Wegmans if you like Wegmans, if you can board it. But yeah, it will be difficult. I guess what we'd all like to see are ideas. I went by the Giant the other day and I spoke to one of the employees. Now, this person wasn't a manager per se, probably not authorized to speak, but as a regular customer, she recognized me. I said, all right, what's the real deal here? Why are you closing? And they said, well, the profits are lean, if at all. Foot traffic is way down compared to our other stores. And there's a lot of theft there. And she said, so some years, there's no profit at all. We actually run a loss. But I also know that a lot of the other Giant stores, Giant stores, sorry, WISE stores, they have off-duty police officers and sheriff's deputies in the front of the store to sort of deter people from shoplifting. But I've never seen one there at Conklin Avenue. So maybe perhaps they set it up to fail. I don't know. You'd have to look at when is the lease going to be renewed on the property? You know, are the landlords looking to bump the cost way up? Who knows? Sometimes it's a bargaining tactic. You know, let's generate some public outrage and maybe we can get landlords to, you know, come in at the same level or, you know, just a little bit of an increase. So you really don't know. You would have to speak with the management at WISE and find out just exactly what their situation is or what they say their situation is. I know the county has a bus system. We'll do what we can to move people to the next closest grocery store, but it's just not the same. It's not the same. So hopefully folks will come up here to generate some ideas. And maybe we can save it. If we can't save it, maybe we can find alternatives that won't severely harm the residents who really count on that grocery store as their mainstay. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. I actually have a letter that was read at the city council meeting that I submitted that you read beautifully. Maybe you would do it for me again. I am a resident of the southeast side of Binghamton for 45 years. I've lived there. I raised three boys on that side of town. I'm still there up on the hill. It is my go-to place. As Mark said, though, I have a vehicle, so I am not going to be.
You're speaking to them.
Sorry, it's okay. I'm not used to this. It's okay. I won't be as affected, except when next time I use a recipe that says I need vanilla and I don't have any, boom. But that pales to what I see on our side of town. People walking, taking the bus, sounds like, you know. But if you're taking a bus, how much can you carry home with you? And so all these, and so that's, I don't know if I should just read this and stick to the script. Okay.
Sure.
I know that you are aware how devastating the closing of 307 Conklin Avenue WISE will be to our southeast side community. There's not much on this side of town. Fortunately, we do have a pharmacy, Rite Aid. The reality, however, is that Rite Aid filed bankruptcy not too long ago. So who knows how long we'll have a pharmacy. If the Conklin Avenue WISE closes, we will not have a suitable grocery store, a place to purchase food and other essentials. The southeast side will be a food desert. We do have a wonderful neighborhood public school, Benjamin Franklin. According to the U.S. News webpage, 76% of the students attending Benjamin Franklin are considered economically disadvantaged. According to the NewYorkSchools.com, 366 out of 544 students receive free lunch and another 53 students receive reduced lunch. These statistics are indicators of the economic disadvantage that is present on the southeast side of Binghamton. Many southeast siders rely on public transportation, pay for private transportation, or they walk to the WISE on Conklin Ave. Many are disabled. It will be even more burdensome for them to travel to a different location. According to Homes.com, 18.6% of the population on the southeast side is over 65, me included. The median household income is $45,353. The national average is $71,000. Closing this WISE is another blow to the underserved, the marginalized, the economically disadvantaged, the low-middle-class working and retired people of the southeast side community. It should be noted that due to its proximity, this store is also important to people that live in the town of Binghamton and the town of Conklin. We need a grocery store at this location. I had a side note here when we were talking about profit margins and things like that. I have the, right now, as of January 31st, 2024, WISE Market had a market cap or network worth of $1.63 billion. I understand. I lived it. I had to pass by a lot of people to go into the store who are homeless, who are asking for handouts. I've handed out numbers of times. I see the grocery carts all over this, all over the city that are being used by people to cart their wares, maybe to take metal goods over to WISEman or whoever to get a couple extra dollars. It's just, there's really big problems on our side of town. Solutions I don't have. I do think the idea of perhaps an off-duty officer sounds like a starting point. And I know from the agenda that Hadassah had sent me was that we were going to hear what the causes were of this store closure. Is that true? Do we have a, do we know why?
Okay, I can speak to that, I guess. So what I did was I reached out to all the, yeah. I reached out to the county. I reached out to the stores. I reached out and I can later read a list of the people I reached out to, some of which hopefully will be here to present or have submitted letters in writing. But yes, that's the hope is that people will be here tonight to present the different areas that they're.
I certainly identify, I can see some of those issues. There were times when it was very hard for me to go in there to shop. There's also a Vision's drive-through there, banking place. I don't know if they'll stay there after WISE closes, but that's also a very convenient place. A lot of people go there. I was approached a number of times by people for money and things like that. So it is a difficult situation. So the problems maybe are bigger than what we can do here tonight, what I can do. I just know all we have is bars, car dealership, not even dealerships, car repairs. We used to have a subway that closed. We don't have a subway anymore. They closed down. We have all kinds of buildings that are boarded up. Tattoo parlors, but no food, gas stations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I didn't even tell you my name.
Evening, Kenia.
Hi.
Hello, counsel. My name is David Curry. I was invited by Hadassah to come and talk to you. I have some, a little bit of experience. I'll read some notes, but I'd first like to just express also the sentiments that have been expressed already, which is that the loss of a grocery store is shattering to a neighborhood. And there's no doubt about that. So, as I said, the closing of any food store is a major event for any neighborhood. Having previously led a community effort to launch a food cooperative to fulfill a long-neglected need on the north side food desert a few years ago, I'm keenly aware of the challenges facing food retailers in today's market environment. The market has changed dramatically even in the last few years, except probably for Wegmans, which continues to dominate the market. All these has expanded their presence in our area and might present an obvious opportunity. The Save-A-Lot in J.C. has closed. That would be a difficult thing to, a steep mountain to climb. The Price Chopper in Binghamton was and probably continues to be the number two store. And the new BJ's and the new BJ's at the Oakdale Commons and Sam's and the Walmart stores are really tough to compete with. So all this is to say that the likelihood of securing a new store on the south side will be challenging. However, we're the south side to receive recognition as a food desert. And I think that it has, right? Not positive of that. There could potentially be funding from the Food Trust and/or the USDA, the Department of Agriculture. There is the possibility of restarting a grassroots effort to open a cooperative food store, which serves as a community-building anchor. And most importantly, prevents the leakage of money of distant, long, non-local enterprises, the leaking of money out of our community. This is an important way to accelerate local financial commonwealth building. Co-ops often keep it local by sourcing local products and they create equity. Sometimes the first equity people have ever owned, a share, in the form of a share at stake in the community. Those shares increase local, social, financial, and built capital because local members own the cooperative enterprise. The co-op building, they own the cooperative enterprise, the co-op building, and are anchors in ways that commercial supermarkets are not. The challenge, however, is clear to see. WISE is closing most likely because it is no longer able to maintain profitability. There can be many other reasons, but this seems to be a relatively rational assumption. Attracting another supermarket operator would seem to me to be a very big challenge, as history confirms. The north side Greater Good Grocery Store ultimately precludes all future attempts to obtain food desert funding for the north side. Greater Good is an option, of course, for the south side. One thing that's clear from my experience is that without a sincere, genuine effort by local governments, agencies, and funders to get behind any project, commercial or cooperative, there is no chance of successfully tackling such an undertaking. And even so, it will be challenging. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
It's wonderful to be here again in these chambers. My name is Robert Wesler. I am the minority leader of the Broome County Legislature. I served eight years as a city councilman here, and I am so proud of this body of people who are representing our city right now. The store is closing. Point in fact. It's, that's point in fact. So what we need to be looking at is ways to get food there or ways to get people to food. Those are our two priorities. Get food there, get. The Community Foundation did a lot of great good, or greater good, and maybe can be tapped again somehow, some way. My fellow colleague, Mr. Wayland, pointed out, said something about busing. And I said, we could create a shopper special from a certain point to the grocery store. And I'll be happy to call the head of transportation to talk him about that. I know that the mayor, Donald Lepardo, and Jason Garner have all spoken about this. And I know that things are in the works somehow, some way. I know that. One of the things that you can be looking at is the BLDC that you have at your disposal. Okay, they have funding that can help create business and job growth. You have the small community grants from the county of Broome, okay, for up to about $50,000 where people can make sound investments into the community. So those are ways and places to find funding. But look at all new things. There's no reason that we need to have a brand-new total grocery store. We could have a departmentalized, little shops, little bodegas that are increased, increasing along the way that will help stem the tide. And it spurs jobs and spurs creativity in the community. So that's where I'm coming from. I know that you guys are all going to do your very best. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bob. So before anybody else comes up, our clerk is going to read some of our comments that were sent in electronically, and then we'll have some people come up. Thank you. Yeah, she's going to read three. All right.
So from Tom Griffin of Binghamton, "To whom it may concern, it's very unfortunate the WISE is in such financial straits that they feel it necessary to close a neighborhood store in the market they serve that is not meeting their financial metrics. Not a happy customer." From Christina Newell, "To whom it may concern, I am a former resident of the south side of Binghamton where WISE Markets, previously Giant, has been a cornerstone for our community. This grocery store is not just a place to buy food. It's an essential lifeline for many residents in our area, including those living in a nearby subsidized housing complex. The residents of the complex include low-income families, elderly, and those with special needs who rely on this store for their daily necessities. WISE Markets is within walking distance for many and directly on a bus line. Its convenient location makes it accessible even to those without personal transportation. If this store closes down, these people would have to travel much further, potentially requiring multiple bus transfers just to get their basic groceries. The closure of this WISE Markets store would result in what's known as a food desert, an urban area where it's difficult to buy affordable or good-quality fresh food. We cannot let our community become another statistics or a statistic or allow our neighbors' access to fresh and affordable food to be compromised. It is critical that we prevent the closure of WISE Markets and ensure that all residents continue having easy access to necessary provisions." Thank you. And from Linda DiNardo, "To whom it may concern, my son and I live on the Arena Street. He works at Broome Oncology and I'm retired from Broome Developmental Center. I have several health issues and we have appreciated being so close to WISE. I can't make the meeting, but want to go on record that we both back and agree with Hadassah." So basically what she said. Thank you.
Thank you for those. If anybody else would like to come up right now, take more public comments.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mary Kaminsky, and I am a resident of the north side for over 40 years. So I know firsthand what it's like to live in a food desert. And I also happen to be a county legislator, so I knock on a lot of doors in that district. And I hear, heard, no longer do, but I heard constantly how difficult it was for our residents and how expensive it was. It adds at least another 20 and maybe more now for transportation. Bussing is very difficult, especially for anybody who has small children. And not everybody can go to the store by themselves. They have to take their children with them. And it's very hard to negotiate small children groceries on a bus. So they have to take a taxi if they can, and that cuts right into their monthly income. It's very, very difficult for our low-income families and our marginalized citizens. And I wish I knew what to say to do. It took years and years. It wasn't money. It was finding a provider for the north side. And I know that that came from an idea from Tina Barber at the Community Foundation of South Central New York. It's part of their mission. Maybe, maybe she can come up with another wonderful idea. I wish I could, but I know it's going to be very hard. So I think we're going to have to work collaboratively to help these residents. I'm thrilled that Greater Good has that bus and at least that can help in the meantime. If there's anything we can do to convince WISE to stay, I hope we could. I don't know. My fellow legislator said it's a done deal and I don't know if it necessarily is, but it's going to be really very difficult and we're just going to have to do all we can. And I just want to say to the residents there how very sorry I am because living in a food desert is terrible and it shouldn't be happening in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary.
Hello, I'm Richard Genaccio, and good to see all of you. I sent a letter earlier to Hadassah and CC'd Rebecca, but I didn't know everybody was going to be here. I'll be happy to forward it to you later. I came up with the same three options that were mentioned earlier. A food co-op, which I lived in Madison, Wisconsin for five years, and they have a flourishing community of food co-ops there where you join one food co-op and gives you membership to all of them. And they have some very good quality food, a lot of organic food. And people can volunteer to work at the co-op and then get a reduced price for their food, which is already lower than the supermarket prices because they are nonprofit. And when I send you the letter, it has an attached PDF file on government help for co-ops setting up in communities. The other option would be, I'm wondering why Aldi's, which has a supermarket in Vestal, a supermarket in Johnson City, and a supermarket in Chinango Bridge, doesn't have one in Binghamton? Because they're certainly not afraid of urban areas. I had one in the Bronx when I lived there. So it perplexes me, but that's a good supermarket. They treat their employees better than WISE, I'm told, because I speak to employees a lot. Because I want to know they're treated right. I don't go to Burger King anymore because I saw the manager mistreating an employee there once. So we have an opportunity here to get something better than WISE. You know, I live very close to the other WISE on Pennsylvania Avenue. So I go to that unless they're out of something, and then I would try the other WISE on Conklin Avenue. But I've noticed that they are also changing what they put on the shelves. And sometimes their shelves are empty. And if other, the neighboring community has only one WISE to go to, the shelves are going to be even more empty. So this is the problem that's going to impact not just the local community, but also neighboring communities that have to absorb the deficit that's created by the absence of the store. And the third option, of course, was also mentioned that Greater Good wants to do another success story on the south side. Here's an opportunity for them. And first of all, before I leave, I just want to congratulate the city council because I've lived in Binghamton for six and a half years now. And as far as I know, this is the first town hall meeting. So I'm thankful for that and also to see the attendance here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Les Salesworth, and I'm the director of the Community Hunger Outreach Warehouse, also known as CHOW. I wanted to thank Hadassah for inviting me to share about what we do and be able to represent CHOW. I'd like to point out, there was a recent report from the New York State Department of Health that found that 25% of New York adults are considered food insecure. If you dig in a little bit deeper, in Broome County, it's 23.5% of adults are self-reporting as being food insecure. That doesn't even take into account children, which would no doubt be higher than 23.5%. The problem sometimes when we hear these numbers, and there's been other numbers shared tonight, is that they can become detached from real people. And the reality is, is every one of those numbers represents a mother and a father and a grandmother and a friend and a neighbor and a coworker and maybe probably some of us here tonight. Unfortunately for many folks on the south side now, accessing food is going to be a bit more challenging. And that's why we exist. That's why CHOW exists, is to help fill that gap when folks don't know where their next meal is coming. How we do is by supporting pantries and meal sites with food at no cost so that they can help their communities. And thankfully, we do have some pantries over on the south side that will help take in some of that slack. They can't do it all, but we're going to continue doing it, of course. As has been mentioned several times already, the Greater Good Grocery Store bus is going to be able to hopefully be there a couple days a week. And I'm sure Kenya can answer questions about that if you do have any. And it has been, the sentiments that have been shared about using that vacant space for a food hub, that would be my dream, a food hub that would provide increased access to the community for food and maybe other services that could maybe include a Greater Good Grocery north side or south side. But we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. It's sad that people have to travel farther. It's sad that people are going to have to give up their community store. It's a neighborhood that is struggling. And what we've seen happen in the north side when the grocery store closed, it took 25 years, nearly 25 years, and we really can't let that happen again. I don't know all the solutions. We have some ideas ourselves, as I've shared. But I'm so glad that we can be here tonight to throw ideas around because it's really important that the community get together to make something happen here. What I can tell you is that CHOW, for nearly 50 years, has worked to help people find food. And we have a mandate, a calling, if you will, to do that. And by golly, we're going to stand by that promise to do everything we can to help make our community a better place to live. And so with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Les.
Good evening. How are we doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Matt Moyerdy. Yeah, it's definitely going to be a detriment to the south side, not having a grocery store on that side. And I guess I didn't really prepare anything for the evening, but I do want to state what I've always thought to be the obvious. And that's the fact that the city of Binghamton has such great infrastructure for pedestrian, like foot traffic and whatnot. And there's just, there's been such a lack of that over the last years and whatnot due to just a lack of police presence or anything like that, especially on that part of the south side. And as a former first responder for the town of Binghamton and being in that area, as a cyclist and an urban explorer who spends way too much of his time along the riverbanks of the Susquehanna, the amount of stuff that's going on out there, I feel like nobody, either everyone's turning a blind eye to. The amount of legal activity, the amount of drugs, the amount of paraphernalia that's left on our sidewalks, our park benches, right in the grass, not being able to get police out there. And I understand that once you get out there, it's like a deadlock. I get why, you know, police and first responders and nobody wants to go out that way because there's no easy way back. Once you get to that section, you got to go up Burr or you just got to keep on going all the way down to Frida Lake, which is no longer the city of Binghamton, right? So why would they go that far just to make a loop? And this is just something that I just, I watched over the past five years, moving back here from Florida, because I love Binghamton, and just watching it all, because that's what I do good. These are the things that I've noticed on that side of town. And I've watched it over the last four years. The first thing that happened at that Weiss was the, was the shopping baskets. They used to have stacks of those things. All of a sudden you go into the Weiss, awesome, there's no basket. But you would find them everywhere else. I got one minute?
Yeah.
Sweet. But I know back in 2000, they were working on the infrastructure for the pedestrians to go all the way down the Susquehanna River. I don't know what happened. Mayor Boochie had it all going, but I moved back from Florida, there's nothing. Everything's overgrown. There's places for people to hide. Vampires do not like the light. If we were able to clean the city up, bring light, bring presents, maybe get the BPD on e-bikes during the warmer months, get out there, do some community building. The South Side, that's one thing we've always had was community. And unfortunately, on that side of the South Side right now, we very much lack any sense of community or identity, really. I thought it was obvious, but that, those are the things that I see, so.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jordan Trice and I'm here as a resident of the South Side. Not only do I work on the southeast side of Binghamton, but I live on the southwest side of Binghamton. And I had a chance to talk to a lot of people about this, just chit-chatting and Rite Aid or whatever the case may be. And there are so many concerns, so many. People worried about how they're going to get to their food, how they're gonna.
Push the mic just a little bit.
People are worried about transportation and how they're going to get their food. They're worried about accessibility, the quality of food that they're going to have because now they're kind of forced to Rite Aid and Speedway, which really is not ideal for grocery shopping. I know a lot of people were concerned about what's going to happen to the empty building afterwards. A lot of property owners are worried about the value of their homes. I know I've spoken to some people that know firsthand that kids have walked in and shoved things down their coats, shoved things in their pockets and just walked right out. So what are they going to do in the future to prevent the theft? There's just so many things that people are so concerned about and I just, I wish I had solutions for them. I, I don't, but these are things that, you know, they keep them up at night, especially some of the people that I talked to in Saratoga. They're disabled. They have a hard time just getting to the bus stop, period, right outside their door, let alone walking with groceries however far they may need to walk to get to the bus stop. These are things that, you know, I understand, I get it. Even though luckily I have a vehicle, so I'm not necessarily one of those people. I have been without a car. I have been one of those insecure folks where I haven't known where my next meal is going to come from. And it's rough and I don't wish that on anybody. It sucks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to take one more and then after that, we're going to read some more emails. So if anybody else wants to speak before we read emails.
Hi, thanks for the invite, Kenya. My name is Charles Humphrey. I'm from Buffalo, New York. I came to Binghamton as a university student and I recently graduated and have been working with the Greater Good Grocery Store and the council on the Greater Good Grocery Bus Project. And it was, so we've been out, you know, in the community at different locations around Broom County. And it was like, an earthquake hit like that Friday that the Weiss announced that it was closing. And the entire following week, there's just, even since been so many comments about specifically the Sequoia Housing Project, that there's like hundreds of residents in that building and around that whether it's because of limited, you know, transportation access, physical mobility, like there's a lot of seniors that just getting around, it's so difficult. And that this is like, especially being from a bigger city like Buffalo and now seeing these things change in Binghamton, the history of 25 years ago on the North Side and now with the South Side, like when we talk about these food deserts, it's like, it's, that's why like the shift of to the food apartheid conversation of these deserts are, it's like the natural state of like, that's just what the area looks like, whether it's a food desert that lacks options, a food swamp that's full of poor options. It's like, it's talking about them like they're natural systems. And the point of the food apartheid conversation is it really brings attention to that these aren't really the natural way these areas are. Like when we look at them, it's easy to see like, oh, that's a dried up desert. But that's not just how it is. It's completely human controlled decisions. And that it's understandable that a private business like the Weiss, like it's not profitable for, to be serving a poor community. But that's the problem with that line of logic is that when it's not sensible for a business to go and provide a need to a poor community because they don't have what they need to fill that need, it just continues to deprive the already starved until it's the classic like rich getting richer and poor getting poorer of now that you can't afford to make a business very profitable, you have to have more difficulty eating. Like whether it be senior citizens, family members trying to help out, like community that can't get childcare. It's, you know, even, you know, like you said, getting on the bus, finding someone to give you a ride. Like if you need a booster seat, like you can't have five bags of groceries and that makes, because you can't get big trips, you have to take more trips. And then it's just, it feeds itself of when it's more difficult balancing how much you can carry at once. And it's just one of those, like it's, I, community solutions, of course, like co-ops that like local ownership and then also local partnership, more control in where we source and then, you know, the systems that we feed and support. I think those are like great solutions. I don't really know exactly most feasible and whatnot, but it's just, this is an exact example of situations that that's not just how they've always been. It's decisions like this that lead to 25-year droughts that, that just seems like that's how it is. But it's not how it has to be. Like it's completely, it was in someone's control to make it that way and it's in someone's control to solve it. And so I really appreciate these types of actual engagement to make an effort to solve them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Very deep. Thank you. Sarah's going to read some emails. Thank you.
So from Rebecca Wiley of Binghamton. Dear Clerk, live very near the Conklin Avenue Weiss. I'm worried about its closing. We would like it to remain open since we rely on this store very much. We have been going to the store since 1991 and we feel that it will be a hardship on us if it closes. It's from Greg Kilmer. Hadassa, BC Transit supports the needs of individuals affected by the pending closure of Weiss Market on Conklin Ave. And offers the following information to provide alternative grocery shopping options. BCT operates seven days per week and offers service every 40 minutes during the week and hourly on the weekends. BCT will do our best to accommodate added grocery bags and parcels carried on our buses. BC Transit can be used for transportation to several area grocery stores from Saratoga Apartments and other locations along Conklin Ave. After riding Route 12 to the BC Junction, you will have a wealth of options that are easily accessible from connecting route. For those wishing to go to Weiss, you may use Route 28 to the Robinson Street location or take Route 5 to the Pennsylvania Ave Weiss. If you wish to go to Price Chopper in Binghamton, you may take Route 35. To go to Aldi, you may take Route 7 to the Harriel Drive location or Route 8 to the Front Street location. For Wegmans, you may take Route 35 to Harriel Drive and access the store with a short walk from the bus stop. Walmart is accessible by taking Route 7 to the Johnson City location or Route 57 to the Vestal location. Sam's Club can also be easily traveled to on Route 57. To travel to Target, you may ride Route 15 and this bus will become Route 47 at Binghamton University or provide an easy transfer to that route. The Greater Good Grocery Store is easily accessible by taking Route 40. The New Beaches Wholesale Club can be traveled to by taking Route 35 to Oakdale Commons. We also encourage travel on Route 8 to the Broom County Farmers Market, which is open year round each Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. For any specific travel needs, you may contact our Mobility Manager at 607-763-4926. Additionally, senior citizens can access more direct service by working with the Office for Aging to schedule curb-to-curb rides at lower no cost. Feel free to reach out at any time to discuss regards, Greg Kilmer. Then from Stacy Fitzpatrick. To whom it may concern, I'm writing in hopes to convey my concerns with Weiss Grocery closing on Conklin Ave. This closing creates huge roadblocks to our neighbors in getting nutritional needs met and feeding their families. I currently work in addressing Binghamton's food insecurity issues and see firsthand how important it is to have access to healthy options for food. Our neighbors will be left to get meal options at gas stations and dollar stores, which only offer processed, quick food options. Everyone deserves access to fresh, healthy produce and more food varieties, which in turn affects our physical and mental health. We as a city must combat these food deserts that grocery store closings have created. What city leaders will spearhead this critical issue and come up with solutions for our neighbors? Thank you for your attention.
Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Justin and I live directly across the street from the Weiss in question. I live at 310 Conklin Ave. It is the Binghamton Witch House, easily the oldest house in town, residential. And it's not just enough to talk about the hypotheticals. There are very real consequences here. So from that Weiss, from my house, if I didn't have a car, it's a 30-minute walk just to get to the Robinson Street locate, or not the Robinson Street, the Penn Ave location. So that's an hour out of my way if I had to walk, plus the time it costs to actually like do my food shopping, right? To Robinson Street, it's 25 minutes if I walk. But it's also across a river and through a fairly dangerous part of town when it comes to traffic. Let's be real. The, the intersection between Topkin Street and Court Street, not the safest place. And then beyond that, it gets worse. You know, like I personally see all these elderly neighbors who, one man in particular, my fiance pointed out the other day, he is definitely in his 80s. He is hunched over. He uses a walker. And he's being asked to walk 30 minutes out of his way, both ways, so an hour with a walker. So obviously it's going to take longer than that if he can't get transportation, which brings me to my next point. So the BC Transit, when I first moved here about 20 years ago, I came here with a backpack. Like literally just, that's all I had. I came up to visit a friend and I ended up staying here for 20 years. I love this. I love this town. It's, it's just got a quality to it that I can't get away from. Twilight Zone, right? But when I first moved here, the bus was 50 cents. Now it's two bucks a ride. That's a 400% increase. And if you forget your transfer, that's $4 just to go to the grocery store and back. And then of course you have to schedule it, right? And if I recall correctly, when I first moved here, it ran from very early in the morning, I want to say six in the morning, to either midnight or 2:00 AM. I can't remember exactly. The bus stops at nine now. The mall doesn't even close till nine on weekends. Their employees can't, when they get out of work, they can't get home. How are we supposed to get food if it takes us hours just to get to a place that's 20 minutes on foot, 30 minutes on foot? But it's uphill both ways because let's, so from all the way down Conklin Ave to Penn Ave, there's a giant hill in between. I know I used to live on High Street. It's right there. It's, and I can't imagine being any older than I already am. I'm almost 40. I don't want to walk that far. It's, it's a real situation and there are real people being impacted. So we need real solutions and we need this community to come together and watch out for us because this excuse that there's shoplifting at a place that has, what, five locations, four locations? I don't know how many Weiss there are, but I know there's one on Penn Ave. I know there's one in Robinson Street. There's one out in Front Street, et cetera. They can't prop up one store with the profits they're earning? This is a, this is a corporation, right? That's what they do. Like you go to the mall, our, our stores aren't doing great in the mall, but other stores at other malls are. So what are, what's the corporation doing? They're making sure that those stores are open so that they can serve their community. And that's just retail. That's not food. We established during the pandemic that grocery stores are central businesses and those people who work there are essential workers because the service they render to the community is essential. Until the community is too poor to turn a profit on, that's dark. That's dystopian. It's just sad. And I think it's incumbent on everyone, not just in this room, but in the entire community to come together and figure out this problem because we need food. We need food. We can't live without food. That's a truth. That is a hard human truth that has existed since the dawn of time. We need food. We need a safe, reliable source of it. And we're not hunter-gatherers anymore. We can't just go out and like take down a deer. I mean, my, my father-in-law can, but that's a different situation.
One minute.
This one's important. Like we pointed out earlier, on the North Side, there used to be a Kmart. It's not anymore. It's sad and dilapidated. There's some businesses left over there, but not enough to serve a community that large. And as a result, that area has hurt for a quarter of a century. A quarter of a century. Don't let it happen again. This one's serious, guys. I know you guys, a lot of you guys just got, you know, into the council and I'm very, very happy to have this chance to talk to you guys and really impress on you that there are real people impacted here. I live right across the street and anytime I see that Weiss sign, I don't see Weiss. I see, we abandoned our community.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. If anybody else would like to come up?
Just while we're transitioning, I have a clipboard that's going around for a sign-in sheet. If you want to, if we come up with any updates with what we're working on, we'll keep everybody informed that's been here tonight. Thanks.
Hi, thank you. My name is Beth. I live on Burr Avenue. First, I really want to thank you all. This is like.
Push the microphone up to your mouth just a little bit, love. Push it, push it back. There you go.
This is like the fastest engagement I've seen a government body take on an issue. And I really, really appreciate it. So I want to thank you all for doing that. I have lived elsewhere for 50 years and my husband and I bought a house on Burr Avenue in June of last year to retire here. We, we have kids in the city and this is a little closer. And we lived in a home that was five miles to the nearest grocery store for about 30 years. And that was fine when we were younger and working and, and had raising, raising our kids and had vehicles. But one thing that I loved about our location that we chose on Burr Avenue is that we could walk to the store. It was sustainable for us to age in place. One of our neighbors moved there just across the street like three years ago and is recently widowed and did not drive and walks to the grocery store there. There are many families there. Of course, we've heard a lot about that this evening, who don't have vehicles. So some people might not be able to choose whether or not they can walk or not to the store. We could, but we prefer not to. We like the location. I'm not privy to the facts about why Weiss is closing this location, other than rumors. I'm not privy to the facts about why Weiss is closing this location other than rumors and what they tell employees or the public. I really take issue with a corporation that has such high profits. Blaming communities that have, they don't just serve a community, a community serves them. And apparently has for a very long time here. I've heard that they are renovating other stores. And that honestly, the point of service system for self-checkout at Weiss is the worst system of any checkout system I've ever used in twenty years. They could start there to reduce theft or reduce loss, period, whether it's theft or not. I have seen some issues outside of the West or Weiss or inside. But none that I haven't seen anywhere else. And, um, I, I really, like I said, I take issue to them blaming the community for these issues. I would really like to see the city use whatever business development or I'm not sure, I haven't investigated the I D A in this area. I don't know if that's active here. I have not always been happy with the I D A where we came from because I didn't think it was used effectively for the purposes intended. But this is definitely a purpose that I think it's intended for. But I would not reward Weiss. For abandoning, abandoning the community, I would like to see you actively court a different option. The Greater Good Grocery, I think that's a fantastic idea. I just learned about it this evening and would love to learn more and be active in that.
I can help you with that.
I'd, I'd love to hear about it. And, uh, the Aldi in the community that we came from. Chose to build in front of the sewage wastewater plant. And right across the street from the most active public housing in our city. So it thrives there and it always has for almost two decades now. And I think they are a viable option. I'm, you know, I think it would be worth it for the community to seek them out and see if they would be interested in that. They choose locations that aren't perfect, but they know people need food in, so, um. But again, I, I think that rewarding Weiss for this is, is problematic in my view, although I know that many people who have lived here a long time are attached to the store and would like to see it stay. I think that's, I think that's all that I have, but I really appreciate, again, I love this community engagement and love to see everybody coming, uh, to talk about it. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak? Sarah's gonna read a few, oh, we got someone coming, sorry.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Porter. I am a community advocate here in Binghamton. And years ago, my family used to live on Burr. So I can relate to everyone who is devastated by the closing of Weiss. I can recall on snow days, walking down the hill to get food. Many times, either my husband or I were cooking food and we forgot an ingredient, we were able to run down while food was still on the stove. A lot of the families that I have worked with on the south side live in Saratoga. And. One of my major concerns for some of the people that I serve. Is not only adding on to another food insecurity on top of the one that they already have. But the, the mental distress that is going to come with this issue. And it doesn't just happen with the adults, it happens with the children as well. And I want to say, I, I love the idea of Greater Good Grocery coming over there if possible. I love the idea of Aldi coming over there if possible, so if I were to offer any solutions, I think those would be my two. As well as other people have voiced. But I just, I wish the people who are in control would take a, a look at the bigger picture and not just see people shoplifting. Or, um, you know, people taking something without paying for it in a sense. Because everyone deserves to eat. And I, I work in a nonprofit that has a pantry that has provided food by Chow. And every single day that we are open, there are dozens of people that come through those doors looking for food. And it's not on the south side, but it just goes to show that everywhere in our city, there, there's hungry people. That are willing to come, even if they have to walk. Out of their way to get something to eat just for that night. So to think about the families that will have to go more than one night or more than a week. Or have to give up some of their resources for a cab or a lift. Uh, you know, that's laundry detergent money, that's soap and, you know, dish soap money, laundry money. That they're going to have to spend on transportation. I don't think it's fair. And I wish that a lot of the companies or agencies here in our community would put their heads together. Maybe even people who are in control at the churches can put their monies together to create solutions that would benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sarah's gonna read a few more emails.
This is from Amelia Ladolce of Vines. Dear Council President Matavetsky and council members, I hope this message finds you well. I regret to inform you that Vines is unable to attend the upcoming town hall meeting on Tuesday, two thirteen. To discuss the repercussions of the planned closure of Weiss Market on Conklin Ave. Please accept this email as Vines' comments regarding the significant matter. Vines is deeply saddened by the news of the impending closure of Weiss Market on Conklin Avenue. Recognizing the important service it provides the community, especially for residents without reliable personal transportation. The accessibility of this grocery store is crucial for those who heavily depend on it. The closure not only signifies the loss of a convenient resource, but also threatens to create a new food desert in our community. Living in a food desert poses challenges for individuals and families, particularly in accessing affordable, healthy and culturally appropriate foods. The consequences extend beyond increased food and transportation costs. Leading to negative health impacts and hardships in affording essential needs such as healthcare and housing. This in turn triggers a cascade of challenges, including higher healthcare costs for everyone and more. In light of these concerns, Vines is committed to assisting the neighborhood and navigating the impact of the Weiss closure through our existing programs. Particularly our community gardens and farm share produce boxes. We are eager to actively participate in future conversations and planning efforts to contribute to the support of the South Side East neighborhood. Thank you for understanding and we look forward to collaborating with the community to address these challenges. Then from Barrett P. Brenton. My name is Barrett Brenton, a resident of Vestal N Y. I am a member of the Broom County Food Council Steering Committee and of their Working Group on Undeserved Populations. I'm also on the board of the Food Bank of the Southern Tier. I have spent that last thirty-five years of my career in higher education, working in both urban and rural communities. To envision and promote efforts towards equitable food systems that provide healthy, affordable and accessible food sources for all. I'm writing to you today as a member of the local community to address food insecurity concerns over the closure of the Weiss store located at three oh seven Conklin Ave. This is a worry to those living on the south side of Binghamton and in particular for residents of public housing in the Saratoga Apartments complex. With the Weiss store closure, the following challenges will emerge that need to be addressed. Travel distances and, and access to healthy and affordable food at a full-service grocery store will more than double for many residents. Particularly in Binghamton Sixth District. For example, Saratoga apartment residents will see an average increase from one mile to the current Weiss location to two and a half miles to a similar store. While the city has made great strides over the past twenty-plus years to end food deserts defined as a fundamental lack of local access to healthy and affordable food. Including support for the opening of the Greater Good Grocery Store. As a successful example on the north side, expanding the food desert landscape into another area of the city will come at a great cost to the food security and health of the residents. Data, data from the Food Bank of the Southern Tier show that requests for food pantry assistance in Broom County has increased fifty percent since twenty twenty-two. For the zip code covering Binghamton's fifth and sixth districts, one three nine oh three, over three thousand unique individuals were served in twenty twenty-three by F B S T-supported pantries. This number is most likely matched by support through the Community Hunger Outreach Warehouse, Chow. Chow is ironically within short distance of the Weiss location, although it is primarily set up for warehouse distribution to pantries and meal sites throughout the city. Currently, there are only two non-school food-based pantries in the vicinity of the Weiss store, only open one to three days a week. Shepherd's Well Anglican Church of the Good Shepherd. And the Conklin Ave Baptist Food Distribution Center. Even with increased support and expansion of these emergency food access points, including new sites, giving boxes and mobile food pantries. These are neither sustainable nor realistic solution to providing access to healthy and affordable food to most residents of the area. Especially those with limited access to transportation or income substantiated by a recent twenty twenty-three survey by the B C F C. Additionally, these support systems will do little to assist those with SNAP benefits or those who just barely don't qualify for them. But still live in food insecure households and/or manage chronic disease. The recently launched Greater Good mobile store may be able to reach some of these locations, but only on a very limited basis. And again, this is not a sustainable option for the community. In summary, the number of food insecure families in our community is on the rise. Therefore, this is a critical point in time where the city of Binghamton can take action to once again make a commitment to support efforts. To enhance access to healthy and affordable food for the future of our residents while avoiding expanding food deserts in our community. I thank the council for the opportunity to share these brief comments and concerns. Hello, I'm Devon, I am an assistant manager at the Greater Good Grocery Store. I've been with the store since its opening in January twenty twenty-one. In these three years, I have come to see the impact a food desert has on a community and inversely, how much a store like ours can help that community. As we have grown and received more support, we've been able to multiply that positive impact on the community. For example, since twenty twenty-two, we have a monthly free produce giveaway and since then have given out more than seven thousand bags of produce. We also have been funded for several programs that help E B T and other payments customers, other payment customers stretch their food budget farther. Daily, we are told how much these programs and events help keep family, help families keep food on the table. From Candace Gregory. Good morning, my name is Candace Gregory and I am the Director of Two on One at the United Way of Broom County. My executive director, Paula Perna forwarded me your email invitation. Although we are not able to make the meeting, I have pulled some statistics from twenty twenty-three with food-related needs in the one three nine oh three zip code area, which I have attached to this email. Currently, there are only four food pantries on the south side. Two are Chow Pantries, Conklin Ave Baptist and Islamic Awareness Center. And two more pantries, Loaves and Fishes and New Beginning Apostolic Church. All of these are in about a four-block area down near the Pennsylvania Avenue Weiss of little help to those living in Saratoga. Please feel free to reach out if you have any questions or need more data. Hope this helps with your meeting. I'm going to go through the rest of these letters and then anyone who wants to come up absolutely can. From Vice President of Binghamton City School Board and Concerned Resident Tim Ames of Binghamton. I'm writing to voice my concerns and offer ideas on how to move forward regarding the closure of Weiss Grocery Store on Conklin Ave. This closure will effectively leave the eastern section of the south side with a food desert. The implications of this type of situation tend to leave the surrounding residents dealing with many issues and few options to fill the void left from such a closure. Some points to consider. The neighborhoods of this eastern south side include a substantial amount of subsidized housing. Many of these residents face transportation issues and would walk and/or ride the county buses into the store. Regardless of socioeconomic sta- status, our community hosts many folks who do not have their own mode of transportation. Some seventy percent of students at Ben Franklin Elementary are walkers. And roughly the same percentage of students reside in households that are at or are below the poverty line. Many family members of students at Ben Franklin work at the Weiss and now will be forced to deal with longer times to get to or from the school or home. Ben Franklin currently provides a very important and well-utilized food pantry to support the children and their families of the school. This closure will certainly show an expressed need for greater usage. How can that be further supported and by whom? Many on the south side rely on the Weiss not only for nutritional needs, but also the utilization of many services the service desk provides. Statistics show that communities that have experienced this exact, exact situation have substantially higher rates of obesity, malnutrition, cardiovascular disease. Depression, anxiety and many other physical and psychological issues. What will become of the building lot? The summer of twenty twenty-three saw a sharp increase of vagrants within the blocks surrounding the store. To the point where law enforcement engaged and processed said vagrants regularly right on Conklin Ave, often multiple times each day. How do we prevent another boarded-up haven for dangerous or illegal activities? The added stress of emergent issues in households for things such as first aid supplies, baby diapers, baby formula, et cetera. May be overwhelming and at times dangerous. Folks without transportation would have to make an approximately forty-minute walking trip or find transportation to the nearest grocery or pharmacy store in these instances. How will the closure affect property values and the appeal of the South Side East? What is the reason Weiss has chosen to close? How do we rectify this moving forward? According to Google Maps, a person walking from Weiss on Conklin Ave to the nearest full grocer are as follows. Penn Ave Weiss, forty-one minutes. Robinson Street Weiss, thirty-three minutes. Schneider's Market Kirkwood, ninety-eight minutes. This means over half of those living on the South Side East will have no less than a full hour of walking from their residence to a grocer and back home. Suggestions on moving forward? Open a dialogue with another grocer or food retailer, Aldi comes to my mind. Utilize space on the existing property for a farmer's market or something similar. If the building is vacant and no grocer shows interest, can we look to options such as a community center, activity center, or any other welcoming space? What resources are available to further support the school-based pantry? Is there a possibility of sharing said resource to, resources to expand outreach to community members? Are there any options for scheduled transport to and from another grocery store in the community? Can there be expansion of existing community-based food resources further into our section of town? Opportunities for collaboration with local government officials, the agency and local developers to seek beneficial usage that is sensitive to the immediate needs caused by this store's absence. We must look at the dark and frustrating precedent that our north side neighbors have faced for decades. The difficulties of the absence of a grocer on this side of town will have deep and long-lasting effects on the residents and the neighborhood itself. No different than what those on the north side have faced since the closure of Grand Union in the nineties on the north side. We must do all we can to provide an easily accessible option that directly offers solutions to the issues presented by the closure on Conklin Ave. Thank you for your time. From Teresa Kraus. Good afternoon, on behalf of the County Food Council, I would like to express our deepest concern about the closure of the Weiss Market on Conklin Ave. This closure will significantly reduce food access in that part of the city. Please see the attached, the attachment of our emergency food access map showing the lack of food access if this market is closed. Happy to share this with anybody who wants to look at it. It will create a desert in an area that has low-income housing just blocks away. Although there are food pantries in the vicinity, they do not have open hours every day. From Reverend Dr. Joseph Sellepack. I was asked to comment on the issues surrounding the closure of the Weiss Store on Conklin Ave. Unfortunately, I have an obligation that has taken me out of town and will be unable to attend the public meeting. The Weiss Store on Conklin Ave serves not only residents of the neighborhood surrounding the store, but also the residents of Conklin and the town of Binghamton. This closing will result in many in the local area having to travel further to find groceries. Will also have the added hardship of adding to an already overburdened public transportation system. The result will be horrible for the people who live in these municipalities and ma- many will feel as if their needs have fallen through the cracks. Additionally, with restrictions on the amount of bags to be brought onto buses. They will need additional trips to make it through a week with the added problem of childcare, additional time to get to grocery stores resulting in lost wages. And the devaluing of property due to the closing of a neighborhood necessity. The Broom County Council of Churches is the parent organization for both Chow, the Shoppers Program for Homebound Seniors Through Faith and Action Volunteers. And the Greater Good Grocery Store. We will initially have the bus available to serve the residents of the south side at least two days per week during. Volunteers shop from a list at local grocery stores for seniors who may not be able to travel further due to hardship. Finally, for the food insecure, we will continue to operate food pantries and community food programs. More information can be found at our website on these and other programs. Lastly, we have from Bruce Levine. Dear Ms. Matavetsky, I am the developer of the Saratoga Heights and Saratoga Terrace redevelopment projects in a joint venture with the Binghamton Housing Authority. I am unable to attend the town hall meeting on February thirteenth, so I'm submitting my written comments for the record. The closure of the Weiss Market on Conklin Avenue is a loss for the neighborhood. The greatest impact will be felt by the low-income residents who do not have a vehicle and will now rely on public transportation to purchase groceries. The next closest store, Weiss Market on Robinson Street, is a thirty-three-minute bus trip or forty-three-minute walk. It's about the same travel time to Greater Good Grocery Store at Canal Plaza. Travel time to the Weiss Market on Pennsylvania Avenue is an additional ten minutes. The definition of a food desert is an area where people have very limited access to healthy, affordable food. Somebody living in a food desert faces daily obstacles. Somebody living in a food desert faces daily obstacles preventing them from going to a grocery store and buying fresh nutritious fruits like fruits and vegetables. This would include the South Side neighborhood where the nearest store will now be over a mile away. Saratoga Heights will be redeveloped first and is expected to start later this year. The plans include an expansion of Cornerstone Family Healthcare, which will result in additional primary care services for the neighborhood. We have plans for a tenant community garden and will make additional space if demand warrants. When we redevelop Saratoga Terrace, we will have a better sense of the store closing impact on the tenants. I have experienced recruiting neighborhood grocery stores. I solicited a number of commercial operations during the development of Canal Plaza. What I learned during this effort was that there is an industry shift towards larger stores in more affluent areas that are more profitable. The addition of Greater Good Grocery Store was a community-driven grassroots solution that has benefited the North Side neighborhood. Something similar could be explored for the South Side neighborhood. Shopping locally is the best way to prevent future closings. Finally, Broom County Transit should be encouraged to provide a direct bus route between the South Side neighborhood and one of the area grocery stores. The current route map requires at least one connection and some walking. Thank you for the opportunity to submit these comments.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, thank you, Kenya and Hadassah for driving the organization of this meeting. And, and I, I think Nate was also out, folks were flier and trying to get people to turn out and stuff. So, thank you fellow council members for taking point. As far as people that reach, do you reach out to that we don't have response from tonight? Or we do have a response from, or no, oh.
I'm gonna read the names of all the organizations, the businesses that I reached out to that did not submit.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my question number one, I guess. Do you want to do that? Are you saving it for the end or?
She, she is. We were just waiting.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, sure, Hadassah. Go right ahead.
Take my turn then for closing remarks. I'm pulling up my list.
Do you want to say something Rebecca while she's waiting?
Sure. Hi, to those of you who are still here, thank you for coming. First of all, thank you for engaging and for sharing. Um, I'm Rebecca. I'm here to represent the 6th District, so South Side East, some of South Side West as well. Um, I live on South Side East, down the street from Franklin Elementary and just a few blocks away from Weiss. Um, the opportunity to shop local was an incredible attraction for me when I bought the home that I own. Uh, as soon as it's warm, my two young children who are eight and 12, and I walk to that Weiss, um, to grocery shop. I'm there multiple times a week very often because I forget at least one item from my list every time I go. Um, but I remember very clearly what it was like to attempt grocery shopping with very small children. Fully acknowledge my privilege in having access to transportation. I have a personal vehicle. However, I've worked in the local homeless services sector since 2007 and I see regularly the compounding effect that food insecurity has on housing insecurity and vice versa. This to me is a direct result of the commodification of essential needs and the prioritization of profit over people. And our community deserves more than that. And every family here, as well as every family who is represented, um, by those who spoke, at every single income level. Again, many of us have the incredible privilege of access to a personal vehicle. This will be a significant disappointment to me, but it will not mean hardship for me. It will mean hardship for many, many. We've heard the statistics. Um, I often share data. Others did it for me tonight. And it really is incredibly encouraging to hear so many of you concerned without necessarily being impacted by that same kind of hardship. So thank you for showing up to speak on behalf of the families and the elderly and the disabled who are going to truly have such a difficult time finding access not only to affordable but healthy food. So we hear you. It's something that we're committed to um, and something that we will certainly keep y'all updated on as we continue to engage. Uh, hopefully this won't be the last opportunity that you'll have to share and that we'll have to just hear from the community on it.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Hi, everyone. So yeah, the origin story for tonight's meeting started with a phone call that I got from a resident at Saratoga. I could hear her kids crying in the background. She was reaching out to me as her council member and telling me that she had heard the Weiss was closing and I hadn't heard that yet. So it was news to me getting the phone call. And I'm, while she's talking to me, I'm Googling, trying to find something. Eventually, I, I, I'm like, I'm not seeing anything. She said, you gotta look at Bob Joseph. So I looked at Bob Joseph and there it was. It was an article. Um, and as, as soon as I got off the phone with her, I called the mayor's office. I called Kenya Middleton here, our councilwoman, who is, has the most expertise on food deserts. Um, and you know, none, none of us received warning, um, which is really frustrating as, um, part of, part of the government, you know, that, that, you know, maybe something could have been done or, you know, discussions could have been had before there is such a public announcement of a closure. So, um, I guess I, I would request if you're a, a critical-to-function business in our community, please reach out to the government. If, if you are in, if you're getting close to doing something like this, don't make such a, a big announcement without talking to us first. Um, so I think that was, that was incredibly frustrating. From there, you know, we, we felt like we needed to get as much information as we could and hear from people what the impacts are. Um, but also hear from people with expertise or people with resources or, or things that would be helpful towards problem solving. So with that in mind, um, worked on a, a list, um, and reached out to, to many different groups. Um, so I reached out to Weiss directly, I, um, both via email and going in person. Um, I reached out to Walmart. I went in person, um, there to invite them to, to share about their food delivery and options. I had heard from a resident when I was going around, um, that they might have some programs. I reached out to Giant, Giant not being the grocery store, but being the real, real estate, the people that, that own the, the property that Weiss leases. Um, I reached out to, um, Chow, obviously we heard from Chow, we heard from B.C. Transit, we heard from our, um, county legislator for, for that region. Um, I reached out to Broom County Health Department. I reached out, um, I went to the businesses along Conklin Ave to see if they wanted to share about any future additional groceries they might be adding or any way they might be changing their business model, knowing that there won't be a grocery store there. So I reached out to Sitco, um, and I think it was Speedway out there. Um, I reached out to Mima's Pizzeria, um, Binghamton Housing Authority, um, a, a lot of flier and contacting residents of Saratoga. Um, I reached out to Conklin Ave Deli, uh, reached out to Gillibrand's Office, Senator Gillibrand's Office. I reached out to, obviously the Broom County Council of Churches responded. Saint, uh, Saint Patrick Food Pantries, Broom County, uh, DSS, Rite Aid. I went in person to Rite Aid, um, United Way, Office of the Aging, Rural Health Service Corps, Center for Civic Engagement, Cornell Cooperative Extensions, Vine Community Gardens, who we heard from, um, several people on the Binghamton School Board who represent, um, the east side. I, I reached out to Assemblywoman Lepardo's Office, uh, County Executive Jason Garner's Office, Senator, uh, State Senator Leo Webb's Office. Um, we heard from the developer, uh, Brian Levine. I reached out to CARES, uh, and I reached out to Sierra, Sierra Club for the environmental impact on, um, shifting away from, from walkability. So I, I, oh, and I also reached out to Chief Zakuski, but that was very last minute um, to see if we, we could learn a little bit more about the shoplifting and panhandling discussion, which kind of keep, kept coming up. So, um, I really tried to reach out to people with different perspectives, people that might have different information, different lenses to look, um, at the in, um, and this was organized pretty swiftly, um, but I do hope that they'll, um, respond at some point. And if, if they do, we can still, um, read it into a public comment at a regular business meeting, um, to, to keep the discussion moving forward. But wanted to put it on record, kind of show how we really tried to, to bring different voices. And of course, we reached out to the mayor's office as well. Megan's here.
Hi, Megan.
Our deputy mayor. So, thank you. Uh, thank you so much for coming out. Um, and yeah, it's definitely been, um, intense coming in as a new city council member and almost immediately hearing that there's going to be a food desert impacting your district. It's, uh, pretty intense. So some of those people spoke today, um, but most, yes, most, most of them we did not get. I, you had to wait till the end to see if anyone spoke on their behalf, but, um, seeing as.
Nothing. I don't think anything came from Weiss yet.
Yeah. But the, the effort was made. I, as I said, I both emailed, uh, contact that we, uh, phoned and got an email contact and I went in person to the, the local Weiss, um, handed in a formal invitation and also hung a flyer on the public notice board.
Thank you, Hadassah. Um, so I'm just gonna speak real, uh, lastly, I, uh, grew up in Binghamton. I remember, uh, the Giant where, uh, Broom County Public Library, there used to be a small giant there. And then there was one by Binghamton High School. And then I actually worked when I first started out in my grocery store life. I actually worked and I managed, um, some parts of the one that is directly across from Burger King. So, um, I just remember being a kid and having those, even though they weren't, uh, big, they were still great for walkers as being a young kid and, um, having those, those giant grocery stores before they became the Weiss. Um, Binghamton, I, I, I'm actually happy that there, we have so many people here and I know that we are all committed, um, on city council to these meetings and to engaging more with you all because this is what it's about. Just because we are elected in these positions, we do not know everything. We're just the representatives, so we want engagement. We want people to tell us how we can better serve you because it is our job. Um, I, I don't even know what else to say. Uh, we will, um, continue this discussion. I think Nate passed around something. And we will, uh, be reaching out to you again. Please feel, please feel free to reach out to the clerk's office with an email. You can reach out to us. Um, you can find us online. Uh, we are all, like I said, we are all committed to working together as a community because we are better together. I want to thank you guys all for coming out today. Um, and if you have any questions, like I said, reach out to us. Thank you. Have a good night.